Great. We've got Craig here. So everybody can see. Craig looks like you're cool as a moose today.
Yep, spent today in Acadia.
Awesome, so we're gonna get started here in one second. I wanna grab two things and then we'll do a call the word. Alright, so it's a few minutes after, sorry, we're. Running late. Craig, I'm going to, just for the sake of us being able to hear, I'm gonna try to throw you on mute, so we don't get any feedback. And then we got you on screen, so just let me know if you wanna unmute, okay?
Will do.
Alright, um. I know Ken May is running, said he'd be here. But we'll start, cuz we do have a quorum here with Craig online. So we'll start that way. So let's call the meeting to order here at six oh five PM on June ninth, twenty twenty-five. We'll do a quick roll call. To do that, Sue Erickson. Ken May. Not present, Joel Newman. Not present, Sean Burtzall.
Here.
Craig Conley.
Here.
Here, perfect. Okay, so we have three members, so we do have a quorum. We will get started with the approval of the agenda here. I would like if someone would be up for it. A request to. Well, actually, we don't need to do this anymore, sorry, changed, we're good, we can approve the agenda. As it is.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All second.
Alright, all those in favor signify with I.
I.
Opposed, same sign. And any abstentions? And I'll just note, it looks like Ken May has logged in and joined the meeting. Can you hear us, Ken? He is here, so he's.
You can hear me?
Yep, we got you now, we can hear you.
Okay, what I agree to?
Well, we're just started at the consent, the approval of the agenda, number two, so.
Okay, good.
And we had. All votes in favor of that. So we are now looking at this consent agenda here. On the consent agenda, we have the claims. In there, I will just note, the first part of the library claims, those claims are claims for. The remainder of the budget year, that ends on the thirtieth of this month. Oh, man. And the others are for. The others are for the proceeding. Month, so are all as normal. Is there any questions on the claims? If not, then we have our minutes from the two meetings that we had. Obviously, we had our meeting on the twelfth. And then we did have that special meeting on the twentieth. As well. We have some street closures, I tried to put the email in there from Joel for the Fourth of July celebration, as well as the fireworks permit. The streets that they'll be closing are pretty standard, with the exception of, I believe this year, Joel's not here to represent it. But I believe this year, just so everybody knows. There will be some more street closures associated with. Around Nelson Park, because the inflatables, they'll be inflatables this year, and those will be in the streets around Nelson Park this year. We have the liquor license renewal for the station. I can report that we did receive a, Artie and Roger provided a check for that balance. So they're our client and trued up now on the zero percent interest loan. And I think we all got the email from. I think it was you, Artie, right, that shared the email about the nutr- invoicing situation, so. They got the invoice from us early May and have trued up, so we're clear there on that. We do have Resolution forty-nine. This is just our animal rescue renewal contract. And then. We have a resignation from the park board, Amber Junkst. She, I think, believe has had a promotion and. With the school district, which is exciting, and so, less time. Is there any questions about what's in the consent agenda there?
One thing on the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
As far as the old school property, is there, will there be anything there, do you know?
My understanding is, I don't believe so, but I don't know that as a fact.
And you know if there'd be a helicopter landing again.
I don't know if there's a helicopter landing, we should follow up with Joel, that would be a great place.
Yeah. Just in our concerns I have.
The only thing I would say on fireworks, they do need to provide evidence of a certified. Person to be in charge of the fireworks, right?
Or you're talking the cities?
This is, this is the cities, yeah.
This is the cities.
Have they shown us that someone, usually there's a form they turn in that says, I am certified to show qualifications of someone.
We're all employed by J and M.
Yeah, we hold that.
I thought we usually had a thing, so.
I guess.
Over my comment.
Okay.
Taylor? Hold on just a second, Chad, go ahead, Ken. So just under the. Resolution forty-nine.
Yep.
That should be an animal control service, animal rescue would make it confusing with the, with the organization Animal Rescue League. In Ankeny, so it's really animal control. That's a minor, minor change, but. Maybe less confusing for somebody that reads that, cuz that, that name just has a big presence in central Iowa.
We appreciate. That information from our vet. Council vet. In two ways, in two ways.
A quick question from Mark, D and K and the Park Supplies. At sixty-five hundred bucks, I'm assuming that's cans and playground equipment stuff?
D and K is seed.
Oh, that's grass seed, okay, alright.
Yep. Yeah, that's the grass, yep, okay.
All the streets around Nelson Park?
The streets that are listed in Joel's email are. The EMS guy would wanna know that.
Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to breeze through this too, cuz I'd like to now.
Right, well, and then.
So. What I see is Third Avenue between Tama and Benton. As one. I see Benton Street between Third and Fourth. Ah, very good, very good, so I'm seeing. Of course, the street names would go with it. So Benton between. Third Avenue between Tama and Benton, so that's here to here. And then we have Benton Street between Third and Fourth, so Benton between Third and Fourth. Then we have Fourth Avenue between Benton and Tama, boom, boom. And so it does look like, and then Tama Street between. Third and Fourth Avenue, so it is all the way around that will be closed.
Those would be barricaded and. What, is there any plan for? Barricades, or do we have any thoughts on that?
Bike troops.
I think that, I'm assuming that they will allow, I'm assuming.
I'm thinking that's what, that's.
Assuming is not a good idea right now.
I mean, what I would do is leave the intersection open, but I would close them back, so you could at least, you know, run through that intersection.
I think it'll be set that way to be turned through, but closed at.
Right, but as far as.
I would think you wouldn't want.
We will try to keep as much passable traffic as we can through these areas.
Yeah.
Because we'll obviously want people to be able to.
Yeah.
Come through and drop people or get through.
I was just worried about. Belt parts soon, never up through their, because they can go around barricades and do what they wanna do.
Right.
There'll certainly be that, yeah, guaranteed.
Yep.
But Deputy Lince is after him, that's. Just kidding.
I would say so.
Should be discouraged. So that kinda covers, does that give a little bit better visual? Uh, no.
Thank you.
And that is, that is the third through the sixth.
And for that, yeah, there, they will be done, they will need that. On the third. They will need that on the fourth. That's all I see is the third and the fourth.
Fourth.
What pity parade.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Pity Parade on the third, they're obviously going to close in theory. Tama Street from alley behind the library to Fourth Avenue. From Maine to Fort, basically.
But we have it blocked at Third.
Temporary for that, I assume.
Early, depends, depends when they have their table set up, I guess.
Yeah, and then obviously, Tama Street from Fourth Avenue to Green Street, no parking on the route, starting at six AM on Parade Day. Night AM to noon is the parade. Slotted. Good?
Good, you put that up there, that was good, A plus.
That's what I like to hear, Alan.
No more questions, Al.
Go ahead.
Taylor, minor one, maybe nobody besides me is paying close attention to the bank statements. We are down a hundred and eighty grand, but we did make a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar bond payment. So we're technically up on cash, if you wash that out, so. If anybody else noticed that, that a hundred and eighty grand is explainable.
I'm not sure, Craig, if. The date of that payment made, the bond payment made. I'm not sure of the exact timing of the bond payment made versus the statement that we have in our packets.
Oh, okay.
So I, I. Still, we're in a good position, I just don't know when that, we had a bond payment of two hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, it does say that that was four-two, and our statement is five-thirty, so you're probably right.
Yeah, I'm hoping that's it, but sitting in a hotel room, I'm not able to do my normal due diligence, sorry.
You're right, I just hadn't looked at it, the dates, compared the dates, but yes, you are correct, the dates line up. Yeah, the account between, yep. Yeah. The account through the month of May is down a little bit, but. With those expenditures. Yeah.
Yeah, the, not a one-time payment, but the bond payment explains why we're down. Hundred and eighty cents, we paid two seventy, so.
Yes.
And then there's. Wash that out, we're actually up ninety.
I think that need to be made too, so we're working through that.
Yes.
We're working through that. Sean, you were saying?
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A first from Sean, a second from Sue, any more discussion there needed on that? All those in favor signify with I.
I.
Opposed, same sign. And any abstentions, I did have Craig and Ken with eyes there. Alright, our citizen forum. Is there anyone in the audience here tonight that would like to take a second to speak? Or had a topic they wanted to talk about? Yeah, we'll do you in just a second. Any? Nobody, questions? No? Alright, that's great, that's good to hear. We'll move then to the presentations, we'll go real quick with the sheriff here that's present with us tonight, Deputy Lince.
I love your time, we have some new deputies gonna be around, so you guys can see some new faces over the next couple of months. Where shit, we, we bid these every July first, so I'll not stay for another year in Slater, but. Cody, who came last time, isn't gonna be, I think, March here the year before, remember him, he'll do that, so.
Okay.
And then. On the, or the minutes, I don't know if you looked at him. We had some afternoon deputies come and do like a light our project in town for like a half hour, I think they got all the way, but. They made like six contacts in half hour on Lynn Street, so.
Okay.
Be enforcement.
Perfect. The only other thing that I probably need to go to, Leanna, we've talked about it before, but it's just the, the speed trailer.
Yep.
If that, if you can keep us on that list to try to get that.
Then I can send the, this deputy's in charge, that you want back, the other reference where?
I thinks, I think South Lynn would be really nice.
I think that's where the lighter project was.
Okay, or North Lynn, one of those two, I think would be kinda nice.
South one, I think is.
Yep, I mean, we're, we are working, our cameras should be getting some data, I know we had some tech issues with that, but. It'd just be good to have for you guys as data as well.
Yep. You gonna get it back downtown?
Yeah, that'd be great, I don't think we've had it since I've been the mayor yet. Um. Yeah, we did, we did get your help with a little minor kinda teenager vandalism situation, which was good, appreciate them coming in to check with us and. Handle that for us, so that was good, I know. And then we obviously have baseball season going on, so just obviously that reminder that first, and then south on.
You can hide by our shop anytime.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think, you know, first and green, from our perspective, you know, it's, if somebody's reckless, they're reckless, but really, we just. Want the kids to have a reminder that it's good to slow down.
I can't remember, we've had some issues years past, but it always seemed like.
All times of the.
It's kinda.
Just, yeah, you just.
Throughout the day, yeah. Yeah, it's kinda sporadic. A lot of times in the morning, like if they have ten o'clock games or something, you'll get a crowd, and then sometimes there's a hitting in the morning or so, and then they come back for games or practice. Yeah. Anything, we just keep them somewhat slowed down. Reminded.
We do have a new daycare open too.
We do have a new daycare on First Avenue, too, yeah. First Street there.
I think we had an accident the other day, a couple days ago, someone drove into a house, I don't know if you guys heard about that, we actually had a deputy in town, just with the natural. Call in to get dispatch out to him, they never find him at the time, but yeah. We had someone down for it, about as good a response you could have.
Yeah. So you got, you said you didn't get. Didn't find enough people, or you didn't?
I think they called him later, yeah, reported it, that night there, we'll never locate like seven.
Perfect, yeah, totally. Um. And then obviously, we did pass, or we haven't passed, we didn't pass the fireworks ordinance, but we did talk a little bit about. The excessive fireworks, we're obviously rolling into the Fourth of July. So if we need to make sure to, we follow the state code, isn't that where we're at right now?
Thought you guys. Had a different.
We do have a little bit different unrestricted on weekends and that, so. We can try to, we can get you, try to get you a copy of that, if, or do you think you guys have that?
I mean, I know we have one from last year, but I think it's changing.
Nothing changed, so if you have last year's, just if you'd have it on readily available. Um, cuz I, I will almost guarantee you, there'll be some calls from somebody at some point.
Fridays and Saturdays, I think, they'll post the fourth.
Yeah, and I think it starts here pretty quick.
I thought it follows the state code, but it's just only a weekend.
I think that just sounds right.
Yeah.
I'll be one that calls, and when I call in, they do not know, because they do not have. That they have so many people being trapped.
We have so many towns, I try and get it, I stand out there and do.
But they, they don't, they don't.
Our dispatch usually will try and reach out to us, I can give to them, so they kind of feel the calls when they're coming, you know.
Yeah.
Would you like to take this with you that says exactly what it is?
Sure, you know, the copy, whatever you have, I'll, I'll take it to.
We got plenty of those.
We could copy it too, I mean, if you want, it's already.
Yeah, perfect, I can send this out, so we definitely have it, I'll give it to the fashion they have it to, and then it'll come in, so.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Are you off today?
Yeah.
So you come in for that, thank you for coming here on your off day, we do appreciate that, that's a big commitment. Not a required commitment, but thanks for the relationship from that standpoint, we've liked having you here.
Yep.
For sure.
They said I'm gonna do another year, so I'll be back soon.
It helps when you live close too, that's a, the convenience factor is good too, but we like the convenience factor of you as well, so. Outstanding, well, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Um, Library's not here tonight, so I'm gonna just pull a fast one, a sub here, we have Cindy and Patrick here, Cindy from the county. Chrissy, sorry. Crystal, Crystal, I have your, I have your note in here, but. Um, Crystal, right, Davis. I remember the last name. And Patrick Sheehan here. Right?
Yep.
Alright. To present to us about an event that's coming up, that is gonna involve the city of Slater, I have added this in the packet, the email associated with it, so let me. Into it here, but please, the floor is yours, we. We are ready to hear from you.
We have one more, we're saving for somebody who's enough here.
Crystal Davis, sorry. I hate what turns in his name, I apologize. I have it right here on the email too, I just couldn't get flipped to it fast enough.
Just to do a camera, I'll just give a quick history of the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, I'm sure you guys are aware of it, I started here in two thousand seventeen. By that fall of seventeen is when we were like, hey, let's start working towards paving the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, goal they had since the nineteen nineties when they purchased it. It really came possible once they got that bridge or discovered it in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. So we started in two thousand seventeen, I wrote my first grant, I'm with that winner of two thousand eighteen. I got a second grant before we even had the master plan done, and we paved from the school to five hundred thirty-fifth in two thousand nineteen. While the contracts were paving out of writing grants, we got the next phase, we're paving from Hudson all the way to Stunkford Bridge. And then I kept writing grants and getting more, and then to get, so many projects get really large. Try to break up phase three and three and three B, but I was able to get two grants for each one of them. Um, we got those, but the timing wasn't perfect because of COVID hit. Then COVID hit, and then, you know, all the, the COVID dollars are out there, and we went chasing those as much as we can, if we wanna keep those short accounting, and. We're able to utilize our funds as a maximum dollars, where we're able to get a. One point five million dollars grant to pay from S fourteen, the halfway point all the way to Collins. Just happened out, they both got one bit out last spring, they're all done, so. As of, I think it was October twentieth, the trail's been open, all the way from the Hydrussel Trail, all the way to Collins. Twenty-one point two one miles, so I like that number, cuz I can always remember that one, so. We have an open, we're still gonna have some periodic closures here and there, we do have. Pipeline easements, items like that, and the way I'm coming up, and I'm begging, pleading to please wait till after. Middle of August for them to do that, so. It's been a long time coming, I've been working with people from Slater for. Since two thousand seventeen when I started, so it just, it finally came to fruition, cuz we're loving it. That being said, we are looking to celebrate that project, something that they wanted to start, some thanks to ninety. It actually came to fruition in the last six years, and I can't let you talk, and what we're doing there.
So we are connected from the west side to the east side of Story County on the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, so we're gonna celebrate on Saturday, August ninth. And we'd like to kick off that celebration here in Slater. And then we'll hit all the communities on the way over and end in Collins. And we are partnering with the Iowa Bicycle Coalition to host a ride, it is free to ride. And there's a registration link on the materials that we handed out, so what we're, we would like to do is start here in Slater at your trailhead. And need your registration, check people in, we do a rolling start, so anytime between eight and nine AM, the riders would leave the trail. And then we'll hit all the towns along the way, Huxley, Cambridge, Maxwell, and then we end in Collins, and at twelve thirty, we'll be doing. Some speaking and then a formal ribbon cutting, I do know conservation will be reaching out to all the mayors, including you. To see if you can come over for a photo op with all the mayors at twelve thirty at that time, when we did the ribbon cutting. But what we're here to say is, I also, we also included some questions that you might have with some answers that the. Folks have put together, so. We just wanna come and say, hey, we want you to be part of it, we wanna, of course, start the bike riders off here. We anticipate there could be up to two hundred riders that would start off here. They would. Come a little bit ahead of time to set up, get ready to go, so. They might be looking to. Go to your businesses if they're open, have some coffee, maybe have a little snack. What can, what can you do as a city, either to help connect the riders to your main street and your businesses? Or would any of the businesses come to the trailhead? To offer some beverages or goodies before they go. Then they'll take off, and they do anticipate that some riders will. Come back, this is not a ride where they send a lot of cars ahead over to Collins and then drive them back to the vehicle. They'll turn around at Collins, and, and so the bikers will end up back here again at the end of the ride. Um.
Awesome.
So we just wanna let you know that we're, we wanna do this, we think it's a great way to celebrate, not only that the, the trail is complete. But that we can show off all the small towns that are, that make up the trail as well, and. We'd like to you to join in and participate.
Yeah, we kinda want every, every community to kinda show their own brand, what they have out there, I mean, Slater, I mean, you know, you got two trails in your town here. And we show it all right across the street, you know, everything you have. Though Huxley, you know, they wanna do that, you know, Cambridge, Cambridge is in the process, in the beginning process of putting a big trailhead in. You guys already have that, the one up here, I still have to explore that area over there, Maxwell, same thing, Collins, same thing, they're. When it comes to bikes, if you got a place for them, just put the foot on the ground to fill up their water or go to the bathroom. That's where Simon takes them down Main Street, takes them to the Historical Society, that's what we want, so. Another way, we wanna get the cities all involved, and we wanna get as many people who can to start taking this trail, cuz I, I know Huxley's been seeing it for a while. Maxwell and those other towns are really getting surprised, one of our board members got seventy people to bring Maxwell and Collins. Three Saturdays ago, or Sunday afternoon, so. I'm guessing about ninety-seven of the bike riders go up and down this trail, I have no idea about this one yet, so we're, another great, have some. Notice, notice a bike case, there's more trails, and then more people come up, and. More people wanna stop and let the town.
I'm reaching back out to you, some of our volunteers that work with conservation are working on a promotion plan that the county will help support, so. They're working up when they need things, so we might reach back out and say, hey, are you. Can you guarantee if the coffee shop's gonna be open? And how long do they stay open? When, how late do they stay, you know, just.
Yeah, we can quantify that for you.
So then they can put it on registration, then we can help promote that. When you arrive in Slater, go here for your coffee. Or at registration, do you, do you guys have any signage or, how much boards that say go this way, or you know.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask a couple, can I ask some follow-up questions, or do you guys have a few more things? When you say kick off at the trailhead, can you define that for us, and is that fluid, and is that fluid?
It is the one.
At the arboretum there?
Better parking. Just gives it hard about nature trail, we don't wanna have that rim with that parking, cuz then it has a daytime festival.
Yeah.
We do have better parking there, I'm guessing what you're gonna see in all of the bike riders, some will be coming up from Ankeny, they're gonna park in the.
Yeah.
Stop there to kinda get the.
Would it be, would you consider registering on Main Street? Would you consider like your registration check-in with a route that kicks off and we can run down Main? And we can probably work with some control to go just. Kick right up first and then just jump on there, or would you guys consider, would that be problematic, or? That would just help from, this is the perspective.
The best parking.
We have two businesses here, if the trailhead's there. We have two businesses on Main, we have a business down there, the Nighthawk, that nobody's gonna miss, cuz if you've been through Slater, everybody knows the Nighthawk.
Well, your, your starting location is the Nighthawk. With the.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, there's one on five green.
So that's, we can go back to Iowa Bicycle. That's where they had presented, started.
So you're going on the heart. We might, we might want it that way, just because they might want people to understand how to get off the Hydrussel Trail and go that way.
That is one big thing, people come, they see that eight side, we put some new signs, and they come up, and they're like. Then the Nighthawk falls in play instead of going that way, so we're still exploring options to try to get that dressed up a little bit nicer, more obvious.
We could partner with you on that, if you just wanted to sit down, we could really dress that corner up and figure out how to promote them. We had a visioning.
Weighted sign, but if you don't hit the right angle, you can look right past that, see it, I'm throwing around extensive paints or stickers on the trails. There's a lot of ideas out there.
We had a community visioning, we did the Iowa State University Community Visioning, and we have an actual design to promote the Heart of Iowa from Iowa State University that worked here with us.
Think, I don't know if I said it on that, or it was trees, there was one being gonna start off, and then I didn't.
Trees forever, that's, that was it.
I think that was a kickoff, so I was.
You should, we should get together and I'll show you the end result of what they designed, cuz it's pretty spectacular, we just need to figure out the funding process for it.
Yeah, we.
We always like to get checks.
Right, there's, you know, development.
There's a good opportunity there, and Mark has the corner lot there as a city lot, but with the right amount of money, he'd probably convert that.
For sure.
Dress it up.
If I had another place to go.
If I had another place to go, we'll have to figure that part out, but.
When we, we board that twenty.
It's the problem. It is a problem.
We can figure something out there.
Quit too. We have the money to do it now. It's like.
But that would be a question is starting point I get, but is there a way to?
We'll, we'll go that round.
Yeah.
Ninety-five percent.
The registration link is ready. If, I mean, it's live. If anyone wanted to go and say they're gonna register a bike. And then we're gonna fill in that site as more details come from all the cities on pushing my being seen or doing.
I believe registration is still free, but we wanna vent out and then on registration, you have the option to buy a T-shirt for a certain amount with the, it's actually a pretty cool T-shirt. The Harps movie, I can't remember what it was.
Yeah.
And I like the ideas on T-shirts. Do people see those? But we're at the Heart of Iowa Nature.
Yeah.
But let me.
Perfect.
The first choice would be if we can register here. And then.
I don't wanna take necessarily the business way from the Nighthawk either, but I just think if registration was on Main, this is my opinion. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sean or others, but people are gonna go to the Nighthawk.
Yeah.
That's a fact, I think, because it's on the trail. If there's a way that we could draw them down our Main Street, that would be appealing to us, obviously. If we need to figure out how we kick them out on the trail from there, we can figure that out. If we need to figure out how to slow or control traffic on R thirty-eight for a period of time to let bikers go right up R thirty-eight and turn onto the path, we could do that too.
True, drive up this way and kick back over.
We could do that. We could do that. But that would obviously help Russ and Artie, who the, the owner of the public house and the station are here tonight. And they obviously like to, to support these type of things and any visibility is appreciated to our Main Street and to their businesses. So.
So it should be started. A lot of those people are gonna go down. It might get a ride back and then they're gonna come back and.
And what my concern is just if you start on the back of the Nighthawk. If you start at the Nighthawk, then they'll go in the back. They'll be on the trail. They'll eat at the Nighthawk. They'll jump on the trail and they'll skirt around everything. If that makes sense. And we need to figure that out from a holistic strategy here in Slater to how to draw more traffic down Main and offer that diverted route. But there's some land issues for that.
Green or another one. There's a couple slots we learned that.
Marshall's straight through where we could go.
Marshall, we don't have property.
It's just not.
Boone is the only one we have.
When there is a seat.
We have property. That's the only one the city owns property.
Is that where we stage when we pay those, how we stage right to that of a.
Yeah. Absolutely. But if we could keep that, if we could open that conversation, there's still, that'd be great.
And that's the good thing is bike coalition. I mean, they're doing the, the raccoon ride. I can understand all fifteen hundred more people. So they know what they're doing. He will know how to get it addressed and.
Yeah, Luke. Yeah.
Yeah. So he'll, he'll wheels it. All right, let's do this and go into background or.
Yeah, we went to college together.
He's got some energy.
Luke and I, he's a good guy. Yeah. Really good guy. All right. Anything else?
Well, just being, is there any kind of permitting or anything that we need to worry about to bring back to you or anything with this?
We actually have a thirty thousand dollar permit fee for bike rides through town. We're glad you guys are here. We're just, we're just thankful you guys are coming. I don't think we have a permit, anything that I'm aware of that requires the permitting for this type of ride.
We're doing the story county stuff, we'll prevent and everything, even on solid, but we understand that. So.
How much does that cost?
I think it's waived for, I believe.
Depends on the, it depends on the.
Yeah.
People.
Okay.
Yeah. But we're still building it out.
Yes, we wanna make sure. We do things right.
And then we'll be in touch to talk about how to promote it and finalize what you wanted, all that. So.
That sounds awesome.
Thank you.
I hate to be like Jordan, but I.
No, please scoot.
Central Iowa All-Star team's got five, five battles as well.
Oh, awesome. Of course. All right. Thank you so much. All right. So Chad, you're here EMS update. Sorry, I skipped you. Brand, Brand, fire update.
Especially if you didn't get the patient done today, cover incident, cause we tell your programs yourself. We learn that through the summer. We'll see how those for the next year, if we continue to do it or not.
Okay.
And the dance point, okay, whether it wasn't vigorous, but another year down.
Awesome. Chad?
Um, may calls, we had twelve, made eleven of them. Slater with the big hitter again with eight logs and one of those is one that we missed. And seven we made this time. Total calls for the year seventy-six so far, which is right in, you know, where we should be. So. Target monitor has been updated for our kind of max side monitoring. The notifications have been sent out for our formation of our Kelly response that was sent out on, on June first. I've ordered ten more stop to bleed kits for fire and public works. We are training shuttle right there tonight with the stop to bleed. So they'll be done. And I told EMA I'd work with the Kelly staff and get them trained here too. That's about it.
Awesome.
So you're stopping Kelly that go through the county or just Kelly?
The stop the bleed kits.
No, you said you're gonna stop service to Kelly area.
Yes.
Is that notified to Kelly or notified to county?
Notified county, notified Boone County, notified.
So everybody know, everybody should be aware.
Fire, city halls, EMAs on both story and Boone side. And yeah, there's a whole list that I know of, but.
Okay.
I tried to be complete.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that. Mark?
Oh, update on the pool. The heater did not show up, but we are, the boiler is working. Knock on wood that it'll stay until the new one does show up, but it, it's, it's doing well. My staff is, I mean, just getting in the swing of things now, but warmer weather is coming. So hopefully. Numbers will be looking better and everything seems to be going well. And then cleanup day, just a reminder to everyone that is this Saturday, seven to noon at. City shop on Green. So.
City shop. So that is a.
Still one green street.
Yard waste or trees, limbs, those type of shredding.
Yep.
Type thing.
Everything.
And then your waste, like your home products and those things.
Appliances, everything.
And then I just wanted to share, we did have a volunteer group come forward from the Baptist Church has volunteered. To help if there's individuals that need assistance. So I'm just gonna share the name. It's Pastor Jason down there. And their phone number here, I'll share really quick for those that are listening or wanna make note. You can get this at city hall as well, but the number for Pastor Jason and the volunteers that'll help those that need it is three zero three. Nine one nine eight one eight seven. Awesome. The pools, yeah, appreciate, appreciate Mark Zach, Jason, Corey's work on the pool. Cause it's a, it's a big task to get it functional and operational. We started on time. I'm told that there was a line in front of the pool thirty minutes before the pool opened on opening day and the kids were excited. There's people energetic for this time of year. And I think sometimes we get caught up in the cost and the maintenance and the effort that goes into making it a reality. And that can cause us to lose sight of that. There's people in this community that this is a big, big deal that we have this. And so it's, it's fun to stop and just know that the work that's getting put in. There's people that really, really look forward to it and enjoy it. So appreciate all that work from all the teams there.
Thank you.
The interim city clerk, go ahead.
I just wanted to provide a quick update on the flow, meet metering project.
Yeah.
Working on. We got all of the video inspection reports from Mark. So we appreciate that. We're analyzing those. And we will be in the next few weeks be installing flow meters in some sanitary manholes around town, probably. It's looking like more Boone or Marshall Street. We're still trying to nail down exactly where they would go, but if you see someone poking around a manhole, dropping something in there, it's supposed to be there. So.
Yeah.
What we'll do is just keep track of how the flow goes, where it's coming from, what's the timing so that we can try to analyze. What's the best course of action to go forward in terms of different improvements to try to, try to keep the bad flow out and in the good flow and.
So you're looking for like I and I?
Correct. Now, that's part of the analysis, the inflow and infiltration to just kinda see where that's coming from. See what kind of improvements might be in order. So. Those will be in for several, we, what you want is number of rain events. So gotta wait for it to have rain and stuff before we can. Make them out. But once we get that data and we've had some good rainfall, then we'll be able to analyze that and.
And you move them around. I got many different days.
Probably what we'll do is set the first round and then analyze it from there. And it could be a situation where it's like, well, let's. We pick these, well, let's move them over to this one. Because there's something we saw to try to zero in on.
That's what I wanted.
Problem. Yeah.
Good.
That's, and the other item, I guess, last around May fourteenth, American Council of Engineering Companies of Iowa. Said that the number one project in Iowa was the wastewater treatment plant.
Wow.
Yeah.
Let's stand.
Back for you. There.
Perfect. So there's a nomination process.
Thank you.
But appreciate it.
There's a nomination process of all the different companies that work on projects all over the state of Iowa. And. There's a judging panel that analyzes and reviews all of the applications. And after they did that, they deemed not only the best water wastewater project, but then they put in all the transportation and buildings and. Every, every category and they picked one number one project and the wastewater treatment plant was selected. So congratulations for that. It's, yeah, we've, we've had one other one ever. So we're, we're excited about it and so we appreciate that.
Yeah, we also, I was gonna grab it quick. Is that right? Maybe you didn't even know about this or maybe it's the same one.
Yep.
American Council of Engineering Companies. This was dropped off by Gross Wind.
Yeah. Oh, you give a lot of hardware out. Duplicate hardware for one win.
Well, that's the first one.
This one just came this week. They dropped off this award. It's the same, I think. Where did I set that one? Oh, Sue took it. I think it's the same. So we did receive two awards this week.
This is the grand conceptor award and this is the grand place award.
Oh. So. Some hardware. That's always great. But some new hardware for the city of Slater. So thank you for bringing that, Mark. Okay, interim city clerk. I don't have anything to report. I'll, I'll say Kelly is keeping.
Taylor. Craig, going back to Mark, there's been a few comments about some of the odors and Mark's got a plan. He might wanna update people since there seems to be some online. So they know there's some things in progress.
Yeah. So I, I've talked to, uh, I'm sure Darren Jacobs and from Snyder also. And we were just talking about what we had done. Last year, leading up to where we ended up and the common denominator was we were missing enzymes now compared to last year. So they actually should be here. I was hoping they were here today, but they didn't show up. So I would assume tomorrow. And we'll get them in and then that's a, it's gonna be an ongoing process of adding bugs. To that settling pond, but it, it's definitely not as bad as it was, but it is bad for sure. So that is the route we're going and, and from talking to people, that seems like a good route. So that's what I know. Thanks for reminding me, Greg.
Perfect. Kelly is working away on the, the keeping up with our receivables, payables, water bills. We did get the water bills out about a day, day and a half late. But you maybe noticed on your water bill that the deadline has adjusted per our resolution that we passed to extend that to create that processing time for the, for the post office. So hopefully everybody understands, hey, we were a little bit late, but we did get them out. I was impressed with how fast we were able to get them and processed them out. Using an interim clerk. So we did a nice job of doing that. Thanks to Kelly for that. Those aren't due until I believe it's the twenty-second or twenty-third of, twenty-third of June. The normal date would be the twenty-second, but since it falls on a Sunday, our resolution pushes the deadline to the Monday. So the twenty-third is the deadline for those. If you do notice anything on your water bills that you had questions about or seemed, hey, this is way out of the norm. We've received a few calls and we're doing some analysis to look into that. The system stores information and if there was information not in the system that was just from experience or knowledge. Then we may have missed something because it wasn't logged in the data. So it didn't process the right way. So if you see something, just call us. We'll work with you to get it fixed. And then the last thing I wanted to say regarding those is if you noticed on your bill that there was a balance due from the past month. We still are working through applying all of the checks. And we actually have to apply the credit card payments that come in. We have to allocate those to the accounts. So we have to do those manually. So we're still working through a stack, as you can imagine, from last month's water bills that came in after the fifteenth. So after the deadline last month and now what's coming on this month. So we're building a stack that has to be allocated to each individual account. We won't, we won't be looking to charge any late fees or anything associated with that, but we are processing times slower at the moment.
Is Kelly a name or is the city of Kelly?
Kelly is our interim clerk. Sorry.
What's your last name?
Gross Cruith.
Okay.
It's a tough one to spell. It's a tough one to spell, but, but she's been great and helped us out a lot. So she'll be here for the foreseeable future as it is sits right now. Um, I will share a couple of brief updates, mayor and council updates, and then let council share. We had a. We did have our city finalist, city manager finalists in town last week at the end of the week. We did have about thirty or so people participate in the public meet and greet, which was awesome and received feedback from them. That was Thursday night. From five to six and we actually, we actually extended it thirty minutes for residents to try to accommodate those that. Maybe we're running late from work or that. So we did hang out here until a little after six thirty, six forty-five and had great conversation. And then Friday, we did some interviews Friday morning from eight to about noon with a, the council and then stakeholders. And then we convened a meeting and went into closed session to discuss the results of those and came to a consensus. And at the end, we were able to offer a candidate. That both the community members, the council members, and then the community feedback forums drove us to. And I'm happy to say that today I received the signed agreement back from that candidate. So I believe I can share that publicly now. We were able to hire Jerry Moore is his name. And he's the current city administrator for the city of Prairie City. So we're excited to have him. And so that's the exciting news that we have to share and we'll be working to find a clerk at this point. We do, we have posted a position on the board in here for our. City clerk. We're kinda looking at a window of time here now to look at some clerk candidates. Once Jerry gets here officially, we'll kinda settle out how much and what staff it looks like. But we did have a really good city manager candidate that was interested in coming to Slater, regardless of whether they were selected for the manager position or not. So that's exciting that people still wanna be here, but even maybe not in the position that they applied for. So that position we do have posted is open right now for a city clerk.
People may be asking, so what kind of expense was it to hire the, the manager on the city? How much is that gonna cost?
A few meetings back, we approved what our top end budget was or salary option was. And so Jerry Moore's. Contract will be for a hundred and ten thousand dollars in the form of an annual salary. His contract, once fully executed, it needs to be signed by me because we just got it back today. Once fully executed, that's public information. So.
Okay.
It's available to the public. We, we want that to be clear to everyone. So those are some of the exciting things going on here. And then we continue to kinda work. Councils pitched in and volunteered. We brought Jerry Weeks, the familiar face of Jerry, back to the, to the, to the office. So if you come in here and you're greeted by Jerry Weeks, don't be surprised. We've got him helping us cover. Cause the one thing that the council convened, when we convened after our staffing changes is we wanted to make sure to try to keep as much consistency with the availability as possible. So we have people in here answering the phones. If you've been calling, hopefully you've been getting, seeing that we're answering the phones, we're available. If you've been emailing, we're trying to keep up on emails. Those are a little more difficult because there's some technical stuff that comes through that. And then we're also working at the desk, helping customers as they come in and residents as they come in. So we're trying to keep as much consistency as possible. Admittedly. Until we get Jerry here or additional staff here, there could be some windows where we're hit or miss. We'll try to, we'll try to publicize those as much as we can. But just know that our interim clerk is two to three days a week here. And so this week she'll be here on Thursday and Friday. And so this week she'll be here on Thursday and Friday, um, next week we'll get her three days and we can try to publicize when she's gonna be here in that window. But we're filling in the rest of those gaps with council members or part-time staff, um, that we have. So we appreciate everybody's patience as we deal with that. There has been, as I mentioned in the meeting, uh, the last meeting where we talked about this, there has been a lot of people reach out and volunteer to help. The thing is, we'd love to take all those people up on it because there's some great people that wanna come in and help. The problem is, we handle cash and checks that come in through city hall. And so we gotta be really careful, right, so that's why we haven't extended and you don't see. A lot of residents or people in and out of here, is we're keeping the group. Tight and controlled so that we're doing the best we can to protect. All the information, but also all the transactions that are happening here in city hall. So those that have reached out, we appreciate it, it's not that we don't think you'd be good help or we don't want you to help, it's just more of a. Uh, liability thing and then a security thing from a financial perspective.
You done?
I think I'm done, yeah.
I got one other thing on the pool, I had got a call today wondering if the pool was open or closed. Is there somewhere where we are gonna post that on like the city's website or?
Yeah, we're getting, we do have, uh, two pool managers, we're getting, we, I believe we now have them access to the Facebook group. So they can be posting and trying to notify, we're working on the notification system, if some of you saw on Saturday. Uh, we're learning the systems a little bit and we're learning how to send out those notifications, so some of you maybe got a text or an email over the weekend about the pool closing. Opening later, we're getting that figured out, we're gonna try to get better about getting those notifications out, but admittedly. Um, it won't be perfect, the, the pool's phone had not been working. Um, I was able to get Hux in touch with Huxcom today and they came over and they got the phone working for us, so this, the pool phone should be working now. Um, and available, so if you reach out to the pool, they should be able to answer, so if they're delayed and staff is waiting or there's lightning delays, there should be contact. Ability to contact the pool directly. To field those questions, but we're working to get the pool managers posting or notifying, not on social media, Facebook group. And if we can, if we can get, uh. We're building some manuals on how to do some of this stuff, so there's some tech behind it so that we can give, we can't just like. Give them a login and say do this, we also have to have kind of a s- process or a statement process for them, so they help out too. So we're gonna, we're trying to get those pulled together so that then we can give that to them with the login, so then they have the full capability of doing it versus. Um, just login information. Good question. But for the foreseeable future, I think this week, hopefully we don't run into pool closures, it looks like the forecast is peaking up.
Is it?
I thought so, I thought later this week it looks nice, so. And we are still selling pool passes here at city hall, if you have folks looking for those. With that said, I think from a presentation report standpoint. I think we're good, I would just, oh, if there's anybody here that had questions for any of us, I know there's some, there has been some fluid change here, is there any? We don't wanna hide from any of that, if there's any questions anybody has. Okay, business items, so this, yeah.
I told people probably nothing's gonna happen till Jerry's here and up and running, but big questions of why we allow food trucks on open roads. And this is not a normal thing, kind of a little paid attention. So we can address that. When somebody had more experience with it.
Yeah.
Just sort of been brought to your attention, brought to mine a few times and.
Yep.
I mean, they're obviously worried about parties over here, but I don't know how normal cities work that. I said we will deal with that one.
Yeah.
Somebody has some time.
That'd be a great question for clerk net. Somebody who.
And I think, I mean, I don't think there's any sense of, you know, already here, it's just like, I think the complaints we get mostly, I think is mostly about. Park, we, we allow parking on both sides of the street, so it tightens the street, kinda comes over a ridge and creates a speed factor, which comes a little bit dangerous, so. I don't know, I know, um. Do you think there's any, I mean, is there anything, any way, I mean, is there any spot they could be instead of that spot, or what, what are your thoughts, what are you guys' thoughts, I mean?
Trucks not sitting there and vehicles sitting there is the same. Cause we got guys that park their big trucks out there, so only way you'll stop that is stop parking on one side of the road. Cause we get people parked on both sides of the street anyway.
Yeah, trailers typically, trailers typically a little bigger, but I agree, I mean, a big truck is still, when you're both sides, it's still tight.
Yeah.
But that was just what I would brought up that.
Yeah.
Food trucks aren't allowed on public streets, open public streets.
Typically, in certain cities or something, you know.
Paid that much attention.
Yeah.
I haven't either.
So I told my.
Yeah, we could just stop getting food. To me, it helps the community, I mean, we've got a lot of people that come, just that don't come to the bar to get food.
Yeah.
I don't know how to resolve that.
No, I, I understand, but I think, I think, um. You know, you and Roger are smart guys, we're, we got smart people here, we can figure something out. We're all ca- we're capable of figuring something out.
If we'd asked for parking out. That was all paved, then we could pull the truck off, take up a few parking spots and they could be off the road.
Yeah, yeah, I think that.
Postal out there for powder too. But I wasn't gonna do any of that, we figured out we were gonna be, if we were gonna do anything with parking.
Yeah, I think, and we definitely need to address the parking thing, and as, as you know, we've been on this long, a little bit of a long mission in my term. To chase down some more strategic planning or some capital improvement planning to where it's like, hey, this is what we're gonna do. And this is the intent of the council today, to this is where we're going, so that there's predictability for all businesses, for all residents. In terms of what it's gonna look like, if I buy this lot, is there gonna be a, a meatpacking plant in my backyard, or is there gonna be another residential area? We are trying to get to that point of predictability, but the parking thing that sticks out for me is it's just hard because of an elevation setup, and so I'm afraid. If we cut, went out tomorrow, already and said, hey, yeah, we are gonna pave it, that that elevation of that might be this, and then it's like, well, we can't park a food truck on an angle like that, so then it turns into like. So, I mean, I think, uh, I think we can figure something out and work together on it, the parking thing is a for sure thing. But the concern would be, as, as we play this out, just a hair without going too deep is, let's say we come back and we decide no parking on the north side of the street. You know, where's the food truck gonna be then, on the south side of the street, so now we're just gonna create a situation where now we have people crossing the street to do that, so. I mean, in a perfect world, we'd find a spot for that food truck to sit on your property or in the public right of way. The public right of way is a longer hut right now probably than. If we can work with you guys and figure out a spot on your property that makes sense. Cause I, I won't disagree with you, I think people come use the food trucks, it's nice to have a change of food in town sometimes, people enjoy that, people, people like that, I mean, there's food trucks that come here naturally. To try to sell without a connection, so I don't wanna say, or I don't think we have to go to the extreme of like, well, then we won't have the food trucks, or we're gonna outlaw the food trucks, I think it's just. How do we get, how do we, how do we maneuver this together? And make it workable and. We got. Yes, some of it's in that planning, unless you guys can, unless we can figure something out before then with you guys and, and in a way that makes sense, you know, whether that's. On, I don't know, the, the right answers, but. You guys are pretty innovative.
Yeah.
I know you are.
Well, like, you know, we'd hate to lose parking on both sides of the street, that's pretty much all the parking we have.
Yeah.
That's, that's it, we don't get a lot of for sure.
We gotta figure out parking as a whole, that's a common question, and we know, and we've, I know the community center library, I know a lot of people are invested in figuring out parking. We are too, but if we're gonna do that the right way, I, I think I just wanna remind the public about something. When we talk about doing parking, it's easy, we could go and throw more concrete on the ground, but there's a lot of things people don't think about as far as runoff and stormwater. That as we start to put parking in here, concrete creates runoff, runoff has to go somewhere and someone's runoff is somebody else's problem typically. And we really, we really don't have storm sewers set up in this area. So the lift of adding parking, although it seems like to, and I agree, it's like, let's just do this and get away with it. Cause that's why I'm, I'm an instant, let's just get projects done, let's execute. The lift, I think, is, we're talking probably hundreds, maybe millions. To execute a real big parking strategy with storm sewers.
In an ideal world, you would do permeable pavers up here to help. Mediate, you know, some of that stormwater, and that's not cheap.
Yeah, so I just, I want everybody to know, it's not because, hey, we don't wanna take action on this, but it's gonna take a little bit of a plan. Cause. Wherever we add parking, there's, I mean, all down Main Street's set up really nice from a level standpoint in front of the place that we reside at, all the way to the school. That's set up really, you know, from a, from a dirt work and adding concrete, it'd be pretty easy to add some angle parking all the way down main to the school. That'd make people walk to this into the business district, the problem, if you've ever been through there after it rains. A lot of water retention happens in between the street and the sidewalk, all the way down main, so. I just, uh, I don't want people to feel like, hey, we're not taking action, we're not taking action on the parking thing, I think the intent is to figure that out. But it'd be foolish for us to chase that right now with no strategic plan and no idea on where funding would come from for it. So. Anything we can do to, if there's other thoughts or things like, you know, I mean, we, I try to be available and have conversation and what. If we can figure it out, but it's definitely a, it's, we all recognize it's definitely a challenge that needs to be resolved. Yeah, Ken.
When, um, I would, I would echo some of what Sean has said and you have said, and, and already, I mean, the, um. It's just multifactorial issue and, but it is, it is easily the single most. Topic that I get complaints around in town. Um, is safety, liability, driving around them, other people's safety, um, moving around them. Um. They don't, you know, they provide some. Choices for people in the city, but it doesn't do anything for the city in terms of there's no, you know, they don't support, they don't have, um. You know, they don't have a business that supports the business license, they don't have property that pays property taxes, they don't. Um, you know, they're, they're without any infrastructure or any cost other than their truck, they're not, um. Contributing anything to the community whatsoever, which as opposed to, um, a brick and mortar business and restaurant. That can, you know, we've got a building that we'd ideally like to have another restaurant in. But the way, until we start to have some degree of regulation of that, you know, you could have three food trucks park right outside the restaurant. And draw their patrons away from, from a business that we're trying to encourage coming to town. So there's a lot of factors with it, and you're right, that, that concrete is, concrete's not cheap in the first place, but all the engineering to get it there. Um, doubles the cost of it, so it's, it's not something you wanna throw in and then worry about the problems later.
Yeah. I don't think these are any sort of unique challenges to the city of Slater when it comes to food trucks across the US and the world, I mean, I think, uh. It's, it's been a thing, an emerging topic among cities for a long time, so. Enough time on that, I think we, we've, uh, pretty well beat that horse, um, but whatever we can do, you know, already if. If we can figure a solution out without going. Resolution or that round, I mean, that's, I think we all prefer that, if you've seen with the fireworks and. Even some of the noise ordinance we had drug on, like, if we can just partner with the right people and just do the right thing or work to the right thing, that's always the most amicable and easiest. Cheapest. So we do have some business items here in the, uh, in our agenda tonight. Um. Told my wife it'd be a fast meeting and here it is, seven oh seven, uh, fiscal year ending, twenty twenty-five budget amendment, we have, uh, we need to have a public hearing on that. This was published, um. We did get this published over the city with, uh, sent this over and it was published, so we're gonna go ahead and hold a public hearing here in just a second, so. Uh, what we'll need to do, I'm just trying to pull this up really quick. Before I open it, so that I have the right thing on there. Oh. Alan, you should have winked at me or something.
I was about to. You're doing okay.
We had a lot of things to manage here with this owl and this screen, so you guys can see everything and. We're really, uh. Really balancing a lot, but, so what we'll do is we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing here. Um, at seven oh eight and. Um. Trying to remember if we need to do a roll call here on that. For the public hearing, I believe.
You do.
Do you remember, Ken? Okay, so we'll do the roll call here to open up the public hearing at seven oh eight, Sue Erickson.
Here.
Ken May.
Here.
Joel Newman. Uh, President, Sean Bertschel. Craig Conley.
Here.
Perfect, okay, so we'll open the public hearing here on this budget amendment. I have not seen any public comments, uh, via email or, or written. And I have not received any phone calls as I've been here regarding public comment on the budget amendment. I promise I'll get this pulled up here on internally here when we get a second. Um, but this is pretty common practice, uh, I remember and have seen before, where. To close out the fiscal year, we do some, uh, amendments to line. Um, the spending up with where if we spent money in categories to balance everything. Whoops. Sorry, guys. So, um. We have an amendment in the license and permits, um. Obviously related to building permits as they've come in and gone out, if you guys remember, because we outsource our permitting process, uh, that is typically a pass through. Um, so that money comes in and goes out and it all. And it all depends, it all varies based on. What we get from a. Um, construction standpoint, we don't have any predictability or control over what permits do and don't get submitted. And filed for that, of course. Um, and then. We do. Have another adjustment down here that is on the total revenues. And sources, so that's gotta be related, um, Craig, please jump anytime if you have comments, you're kind of our. Numbers guy, I know this came to you late, I don't know if you've had the chance to.
If you notice the transfers in and the transfers out are counterbalancing, so that five hundred and eighty-eight grand. Effectively you can ignore, ignore it, it's a balancing thing, so way down towards the bottom it has, uh, transfer out. In the expense group and in the transfer in and the income group. That's the lion's share of the money.
Perfect. Perfect, is there any, is there anybody else, there's some notes at the bottom, purchase of playground equipment, private consultant fees, stormwater drainage. Paid through development agreement. Were kind of the adjustments that were noted there? Any other questions?
Yeah, end of the day, it's a twenty-two thousand dollar out of a three, three point eight million dollar budget. So it's, uh, we're still fairly tight to the budget that we adjusted in November.
Okay. Um, does the public have any comments that's here?
I just have a question. We dealt, last time we dealt with the library, you know, and tried to come up with monies to build the library without having to go to, you know, public, uh, voting and that. Is that in the, in the budget here and is it, has we solved it in any way that?
No, just so, I mean, from a clarity standpoint, what I can tell you is, the last meeting, we talked about the, uh, we talked about. The library and community center, and all that was given at that point was the council has elected that what they would like to do is, um, proceed. With, uh, putting on the ballot for November to redesignate what the local sales tax dollars will be used for. And the redesignation of that would categorize this project into that. So that the council could make a decision after that vote, should that vote receive fifty percent plus one vote. Then it would allow local sales tax dollars to be redirected, that's all we're voting on really, is what it boils down to is local sales tax dollars. And how they can be used, that's what will be on the ballot. If that vote passes, then what the council will have the authority or power to do would be to issue a bond. For those local sales tax dollars up to eighty percent, and that bond could then be bonded for a specific project. And at that point, essentially, the council could review and look at what we would need and would have the autonomy to issue a bond at. That time based on what was needed in theory. So all that really was decided was, the council wants to proceed with putting the local sales tax dollars on the ballot. In November to de- to determine the usage or add the usage in for this specific project. That would be my recollection and def- definition of what has been decided when that comes. That has nothing to do with this budget, that maybe has nothing to do with any budget. It's still very contingent upon what is decided in the future, all that's being voted on at this point really is to redefine local sales tax. Which then gives a funding option to issue a bond against. Anybody have a comment there that's?
Um, just that we should probably restrict our public hearing to.
Yes, yeah, just, I just, I just, that public question is directly about the budget and this budget doesn't apply to that, that's not. Any other public comment, question? On the budget? Okay. So it's seven fourteen and therefore we will close the, uh, public hearing on the budget. Do we need a roll call? So now we'll need to roll call again because we're out of the public hearing, I believe, just to clarify that nobody left during the public hearing. So. We'll just.
I think we technically have to vote to, to end the public hearing. So I will make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Yep. Second from Burtzall. You're right. Ken, thank you. All those in favor signify with I. Oppose, same sign. And any abstentions. So those are both for closing it.
Yeah, I think we need a roll call for that as well, Taylor.
Yep. The roll call, the vote, the public hearing, we'll roll call the vote. We can always roll, we can roll call any vote. So, um, Sue Erickson.
Here.
Yes, you're in favor.
Yes.
Uh, Ken May.
Hi.
Joel Newman. Uh, Sean Burtzall.
Hi.
Craig Conley.
Hi.
Perfect. So now we are back out of our. Public. So you think we need a roll call now, Ken, again? Okay, just to go. All right. So we're out. Here we go. So. We're going to now go to the next agenda item, which our next agenda item, everybody. Is consideration of resolution fifty one setting employee wages, uh, sorry. We need to pass resolution fifty, amending the fiscal year budget twenty twenty five.
I move with approve resolution fifty.
Second.
Second.
Second from Ken May. All those in favor signify, or we'll roll call this one too, just to be safe. Sue Erickson.
Hi.
Uh, Ken May.
Hi.
Joel Newman. Sean Burtzall.
Hi.
Craig Conley.
Hi.
Okay, perfect. So that is unanimously. Um, we will move over. To now our next, which is the consideration of resolution fifty one setting employee wages. On this. And we'll get that rolling here. This, I did, uh, throw that spreadsheet in there for everybody just for kind of a. To appease Craig Conley. I'm just teasing you, Craig. That is. I want you to be proud, but that is, that is an Excel document. I was working to my counsel to try and make sure I, um. To try and make sure I provided the information needed to make a good decision. And so. That is, um, here. We will just, uh, see if we can't rotate this from a view standpoint. Rotate, whoops. It's a lot harder from here. I'm not saying. Oh, I wouldn't. Any, any questions on this from anybody? I will just say. Yep.
I would just point out in typical fashion, our department chairs have taken a lower raise and given their employees, some of, at least some of their employees. Deservedly so, but, um, higher raises than they've taken themselves.
And I would just note, just so everybody knows, I think we discussed earlier that when we did budgeting, we put five percent in the budget. Does that sound right, Craig? That we kind of budgeted that, a five percent increase?
I thought it was a little variable. It went by department. I don't remember what the average was and I'm in the wrong place to, to.
Okay. Um, so what I've, uh. What I've just done is I've, I've written Mark in at that. I, that could be a discussion if everybody wants. Um, Jen's was decided by the library board, obviously. So I, I put marks at that number because I recalled it being five. So I just, I put that there. That's arbitrary. If we need to discuss it, we can discuss it. I just wanted to show for the sake of, hey, we have a. We have a number there. So I don't know if there's a discussion around that or anything anybody wants to have. I do have the pool, the pool rates that stayed the same. Um, and then you can see what the, um, what the library did. And then you can also see what, um, what market then from a raise standpoint.
Are those hourly rates?
Yeah, these are hourly rates.
I don't have.
And the pool, we raised those when the, at the start of the pool season. So those are done each year and they did, I think they did go up a little bit again, but. Um, but those are done at the start of the season and not done at the same time as the rest. Is that right?
I couldn't find a resolution where we adjusted any, we had looked at pool rates this year at all.
I did talk to Ken about that. And she said she was going to do it, uh, in a resolution with us. So to the, and then do it retroactive. So she wasn't sure she was going to do anything at all. So I believe you're correct, Taylor. There has been no action taken on pool adjustments.
Okay. Typically, we've done that before, but before the pool opens and set them for the season.
Yep, agree.
That was done in February of twenty twenty four last year because I obviously have had to do some research to craft these documents. I found the twenty twenty four in our files. I did not find anything after that, Ken.
Um, so we, so I agree then. We do need to, we do need to do that and we'll do that for a future meeting probably.
Um, those are included on this resolution. I've included them in the resolution to be included and I've left them as is. The staff is hired and working on these rates. I have confirmed that. Um, so the staff from, uh, Jen was given, Jen gave these rates to the managers and to the staff. And so I can tell you that they are not expecting an adjustment. They are employed and working on that. And I did set this date. Um, to June sixth, but obviously since we're not adjusting those rates up or down. It's not like setting it on June sixth is a issue, but this would then carry for the next year, um, unless we adjusted it in the interim. Which we could do next year before pool season. There any questions about that? I do see a typo I need to fix on this resolution, removing Jennifer Davies from city clerk, city administrator slash clerk.
You already caught that one. Thank you. Oh, two minor things. Uh, sorry, Sue. I think you started to talk. Go ahead.
I just have a quick question for Mark. Some of your public work staff. Got different, um, increases. Did you have input on? Who got higher raises than others? That was.
Yep.
Good. Cause I just thought that was good for you to, to do that. Okay. That's all I got.
Yep.
Mark, in that vein, um. On Corey, uh, you and I never got a chance to talk about performance wise, just looking at a fixed dollar figure. Uh, I wouldn't mind seeing him a bit higher just from a living wage standpoint. Uh, I don't know his performance well enough to argue that way, but. I was thinking maybe him at twenty three or twenty four, just to get him into a, a more livable wage, but. I'm not going to argue it because you and I didn't talk about performance.
Hey, um, I guess that falls back then to the other guys and just where they are.
He has no like to deserve anything right now.
They just CBO. The certified pool.
He did, yeah, he did do a CBO and there was. There was a raise in there and he, he, we have, we somehow. Paid him that one paycheck, but then have missed it on every paycheck since. So we're working to retroactively get him fixed and straighten out. Um.
Is this next year's wages?
This will start July first, yeah.
Okay, so I remember we talked about a percent increase. There's no percentage on any of this. So.
Yeah, the percentage was right here. I added up here. Um, for you. This is kind of like our internal, just so you can. This is our Craig Conley deal and down below we have our formal government resolution.
Okay. There, there's always an issue if you give the same percentage.
And we, and we didn't here, Alan, and this isn't your area to discuss either, but we didn't go straight across.
We didn't go straight across.
So this is not the same topic to be brought up the last three years. And that's where you're going.
I don't know where you were going, but, uh, obviously you sat through more meetings than I have. We know where you're going.
Trying to get a, kind of perspective about how much re- wages.
They're, they're all different. Everyone, everyone's different.
Every one of them's, every one of them's different.
Different.
Everyone is different. Yep. Everyone, everybody was, uh, rate, it wasn't across the board based on everybody.
Based on performance, probably more.
A little more performance based and we're working to improve that. And so we have documentation, performance reviews, things like that. I would just note that. You know, what we're kind of budgeting and slotting in for the next city clerk is a nineteen percent decrease from where we were. We obviously added in a salary for a city manager. And then I've left blank, you know, whether we have a utility billing employee or not, that's added back. That will be a discussion that'll be discussed with the. The city manager once they get on site. And then we're obviously considering and looking at some clerk candidates right now. Um, including candidates from our finalist pool. Somebody came off mute there, Craig or Ken? Did you have any comments?
Taylor, my only other, go ahead, Ken.
Nope, I'm good.
Yeah. Taylor, my only other was the, uh, I know the library board made the recommendations. Uh, but the last person in the library group, Isabella. Uh, and that seemed a little light. I know she didn't get a quarter for a year's service, but. Ten and a quarter does seem a little light. Percentage wise, I'm not arguing that. I'm just arguing from a, again, a, a solid wage. So. If Jen is, she's not there. Unfortunately, if Jen's happy, then I'm not going to complain, but, um. A solid ways to people.
Yeah, I, I agree. I do believe from that perspective, um. I think that's a library board call, um, and that's, that lays with them. Uh, we could obviously override them, but I think we should respect the library board's. Decision on that and consult or converse with them if we feel that that's wrong.
Right. And I, I can't say good again. I don't know the players, so I just, uh, I'm looking at purely the number rather than the name and, and so if, if Jen. Was comfortable, then I'm not here. I just look at ten bucks an hour and say. If they're good people, then that's a little light.
Yeah. And I think you have a couple like that, you know, um, some, some, all those aids, right? Uh, when you look at some of that, but. I think the library board kind of runs with that. And so I think we defer to the library board on that.
Okay. That was my same argument with Corey. So my same thing. Need to back it up. Just, uh, looking at the final number for full time and part time employees.
And I, I was with Jen when we, when I filled this document out today and, uh, Gogarty and there wasn't. Obviously she's very respectful of what the board says and, and, uh, so I think she trusts them to set the rates the right way.
All right. That was all I had.
I'm going to move, we approve resolution fifty one as. Given with the exception of removing Jennifer Davies' name.
I will second.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Try to get everything. I missed that typo. I missed that typo. All right.
Can you hear me? Sorry, I am here actually.
Yeah, okay, great.
I just want to say that yes, the board, this is what the board decides. I would love for you all next year when I present this to. You and you know that the board is going to decide this to give some direction to the board. Um, this is something that we always have to do before you guys do and it, um, we are always in a position where we are a little behind. And, um, our board is very, um. A very conscientious of how they spend the city's money and they, um, make these decisions. Based on, you know, how they feel it needs to be done, but we always end up a little behind because of that. So if there are things that you all. Um, think that you're going to be doing different for pool or for other staff. It would be very beneficial to the board and making these decisions for you guys to have that info to us well before. May, June.
I hope, um, I hope to be more proactive about this discussion next year. Um, it'd be my hopes that we could analyze this at the same time as we analyze and discuss budget and talk about budget. I think the timeliness of. How we've done this historically seems very late to the game. And I think that's something Craig kind of has, I know Craig brought it up early on about, are we going to see the sheet? Are we going to see the sheet? So. I think none of us have objections to working on this in the February time period as we finalize budgets so that there's clarity versus. We finalize and talk about a percent budget and then we kind of have come in with all these different, like. I think it's all part of the same discussion and we'll work to make sure we do that better next year.
Yep. So thanks. Just wanted to pop in, let you know I, I was here and.
Thank you for joining us.
Appreciate all that. Yeah.
And thank you to Jen. She helped, uh, she helps manage and set up the Zoom links for these meetings for us as well, um, through the library Zoom account. So thank you. We'll move down to the next item, which is just, uh, yeah, we need to vote on that. So thank you. You guys can't imagine what my life feels like right now. Um, so we will go ahead and, uh, do that vote. So. Uh, we had a motion from Sue and then we had a second from Sean. So all those in favor signify with I. Oppose, same sign. And any abstentions. Okay. So now we'll move into our next resolution with our next resolution here is. For resolution, uh, fifty three. I will leave this to the point that just so everybody knows, this is, um. Uh, our employment contract. Uh, this is our, this is, sorry guys, that resolution is fifty two, just to clarify. Right? That's where we should be.
Yeah, you, this is just one.
Fifty two. Is that number? So fifty, fifty one, this should be fifty two at the top page. So you'll see a fifty three there. It should say fifty three. I've made that fifty two. I've made that edit. Um, so that I can go back and make those corrections before they are signed. This here essentially is just outlining that we have, um. The employment contract that we're approving here and it is attached behind there. Um, so everybody knows the employment contract, which is not fully executed yet, but we did determine what the contract details are. So. Um, just making sure that we go through and we, um, approve that. Um, here tonight and everybody was present at the meeting where we discussed that. So is there any? Uh, any questions about that related to what the employment contract is fairly standard? It does dovetail into what our actual, um. Resi- or our, uh, city code says.
Taylor, just a minor one, uh. On, on resolution fifty three, which I think you're going to renumber to fifty two. Uh, I don't know, yeah, where you work with the consultants came out on the city manager versus city administrator. Don't really care which one it is. Just wanted to make sure we are clear versus the. Code language for the city, whichever one's easier to manage.
Yeah. Yeah. So our, our, uh, our title is kind of set up to be interchangeable at the moment is the way this re- this resolution is written. Our code is set up to be an administrator code. And so that's why we've added that administrator. Title city manager are both then it fits under the code, um, with the title, titled. So I think it's somewhat fluid as we've talked about in the consulting sessions in the public meetings. You know, the synopsis of if you have a manager and administrator, it determines the responsibilities in the format. We're not adjusting our gut form of government or the, uh, powers of the individual. Um, it's simply a title.
Good. I just didn't want to get you off the mailbox.
Yep, Ken.
I, I agree. I just find it confusing because we use both terms in the resolution and both terms in the employment contract. I feel like we should pick one and go with it. I don't really care which one, if they're synonymous. Um, but I'm not sure why we're changing when it's always been administrator, but, um, I don't have a problem with it. I just think we need to make it consistent throughout.
Okay. Then I think what we need to do for the sake of the way our code's written is change to administrator. Unless somebody has objections to that.
I mean, we approve, uh, resolution fifty two with the city administration title. Administrator.
We will circle back and we will approve Jerry's contract at the next meeting. Once we have that executed, just so everybody knows. We have a first.
Second.
We have a second. Um, all those in favor signify with I.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? And any abstentions? Okay. We need to move now to the next agenda item. Uh, this is fifty three now officially should be. Again, numbering situation. But this is our resolution. Go ahead, Ken.
Are we discussing this, the, the contract or we're just putting that off?
We'll approve the hiring. We just approved, uh, we just approved the contract language in that resolution. I. We just approved, uh, we just approved the contract language in that resolution. I added the contract in there, so there was a copy of the contract. We approved what the, the contract was. We will approve, I believe in the next, my understanding is. We approved the employment contract. We didn't approve, we haven't approved the individual.
Why? I have some questions about the, the employee agreement. I didn't, I didn't see that that's what we were doing. I thought this was.
Oh, got it. So go ahead, if you, if you want to ask the questions, just.
Couple of things in there. So one thing that's not, that I don't see in there is, um. If they tender their resignation, what their obligation is for notice. And, um. I, I, I think that needs to be spelled out and then when it talks about a six month severance, if, if we terminate the contract. I understand if that's done suddenly, but I, I would think it would be the same or similar notice if they had notice. Um, of that happening rather than it being a sudden change. I don't see why we would do a six month severance.
We discussed, we discussed that. We discussed that after you had to leave the last meeting. And agreed to, council agreed to put that into the agreement, the employ- crafting of the employment agreement. The reason we did that is because. Uh, Marquita and Mark advised that it's very standard to have six months. The reason this would come into effect and for clarity, the only reason that this severance would be paid. Would be if they at the, so this position, every two years, we will have to vote to. Contract this person as city administrator, the same way that we hadn't been doing historically, um, with our past employee. So we'll have to do that every two years. What can happen and the reason they put these into these agreements is because a city council could change and in theory come in and vote. No, we're not renewing city administrator and at that point we're effectively severing employment. And so that's why they put the six months protection. If for any reason that individual was fired for performance or cause. The severance is not applicable.
I, I understand that. I just don't know if, if, um. I, I have no idea. Is there anybody in the room that's, that's had a six month severance with, um. If they were given notice that the, that the council or, you know, that the employing body was gonna go another direction, that just seems. That seems awfully long to me. And then again, it's still, still that gives that, that they, there's no term of notice. Listed in here that they need to give us.
Well, that would be governed by the employee handbook, which we need to adjust, by the way. Um, I would recommend we adjust that employee handbook to, to do that.
About six months, like a long time too.
This contract. This contract makes exceptions to the, to the employee handbook as well though, so it. Seems to me that if this contract's gonna be outside of some of the employee handbook that. That, um, I think it's hard to enforce some of it and not all of it. So if this contract isn't gonna, gonna follow the handbook completely, it seems like this should be. Um, then, then we need to spell out each of those details in this contract.
Council discussed and, and gave this guidance and approval in the, in the. Close session as we review the agreement.
Ken, for what it's worth, uh, only in the seed industry I was associated with. Uh, that kind of a severance was fairly standard. In fact, some were quite a bit longer. Um, so for what it's worth, it, it may be unusual for. Other industries, but I wasn't, that, that's not unusual to me.
And I just noticed again, there are places in here where it says that there, some of their benefits would be. At least, or I, I'm, I'm not seeing it right now, but at least as good or better than what our employee handbook says, so. I, again, if we're following the handbook, then we should follow the handbook for everybody if we're. Accepting the city administrator as being different than, than.
I think they are different because, I think they are different because they're in our code and defined in our code and they're an elected position. So this, this employee has to be elected by the council every two years for this role. So they could be chosen to be not elected by the council and that's where the six month severance protection comes in and we talked about this with Marquita. Because they are an elected position of employment. That's why some of these protection come in, comes in and difference. Is with this employment agreement versus like the uh, employment agreement on all others. You are right, I misspoke. The handbook would not dictate everything as it comes to this employee because it, I was reminded that we talked about the election of this individual.
And things you're probably thinking of Ken is like vacation is definitely different with this employee than it is with the handbook employees.
Right.
Uh, there, there is definitely some, that was one of the benefits that I remember it was different.
And I think if you read, if, if you look at someone, um. I think if you look at some of the differences, is, you know, as I look at it. I know this is a boilerplate document that comes from the Iowa City mana- or Iowa. Uh, I don't know if it's the Iowa League of Cities or it's the group. She referenced it and I see it in the actual physical file that comes from like the city managers of.
Association or something, yeah.
Yeah. ICMA is who provides the doc, is this documents from? So this is kind of their setup of it.
We did change a few things.
We did change a few things, um, to reduce some of it, like automobile, we didn't provide any, any funding for any sort of automobile. Relations, um, we did put fifty dollars for cell phone reimbursement, which is common in these administrator type agreements.
Right.
Um, and if we need to, uh, Ken, if we need to set up a follow up discussion with Marquita or that. I think we can open that door for you to kind of ask some of these questions to make sure you feel good about what we've agreed to or to clarify some of the way the structure is done.
Yeah, no, I just, I just feel the same thing. I'm just looking at consistency and I, I think if, if we're doing some things outside of the employee handbook, then. Then our employee handbook, when we, when we deal with that, needs to change. To have a section for our city administrator that it, that in the handbook then is different than the other employees, um.
I certainly think we need to update the handbook. I agree.
Well, absolutely. And, and so if we, yeah, as we update that, you know, this. Will that change this contract then is the next question because, um. If, again, we're either, we either need to make that, the employee handbook have different sections for different, um, employees or. Or that this agreement is completely outside of the employee handbook and, um. And a standalone contract, but uh, I'm not a lawyer and I don't play one on TV.
Yeah.
Yeah, but no, we all got this laid and haven't come through it with a fine teeth comb. I went through real quick, the only places I saw equal to or better than were. Under, um, vacation, sick leave and insurance benefits. And insurance. So number five and number six.
Yep.
And then retirement as well, so.
Retirement is zippers.
Uh, no, they have a, they have an election. They can do something else with it, but. Our contribution will be the same, but.
Yeah, and insurance will be equal to. So to my mind, the only thing different is that they get to start with some vacation time, which is not unusual. When somebody is a more seasoned employee, it's, it's different. Right, you, you don't want to have zero, zero weeks of vacation when you're of a certain age.
I disagree, but then we need to apply that in the employee handbook that if we hire. You know, if we hire a, um, public works director that's seasoned, then we. And then we're gonna try to stick to the handbook, that doesn't, that doesn't play.
I think it's, I think it's an education thing that we need to get for sure because. And anybody else we hire is different. This is, this employee is governed by this contract. Um, and then the handbook where it says, because it does mention that in all those clauses pursuant to the city's handbook. Um, pursuant to the city's handbook. So my understanding is the way that this is structured, that we have never used this before. Um, and, or we have, but we haven't used it the correct way is my understanding. We, there should be an employment contract like this that goes with. Coach, chapter twenty one of our code that oversees and dictates how this employee is considered. But the rest of the employees, we don't, you know, our employees don't sign an employment contract. Uh, Mark and the public works team in the library and. Uh, the pool staff, they don't, they don't sign an employee contract. I believe they sign the handbook. But not the employee contract. So I think that's where some of the difference goes, but I think they're good questions. We're, and we're in a. Area that we haven't had in the past and doing something we haven't had. So I think it'd be good to have those questions. And it'd be easy for me, Marquita did ask tonight if she, if I thought she needed to be here and I told her, no, I didn't think so, but I can easily have her.
And I'm okay with that. But I think the same thing kind of applies, not, not necessarily to this exact wordage or verbiage, but, um. But I think the same thing is gonna hold true. You know, if you, when you look at our department chairs someday, hopefully a long time from now. Um, but that, that, those may not be people that we're gonna put on the same. Employee handbook as a bathhouse staff. So I think, I think we may need to look at doing the same thing in terms of how we pull those out and, and. Um, and apply things. And so I think we just have to have an eye towards that now. Um, so that, so that we again, deal with it consistently in the far distant future when we have to hire a public works director or library director.
I think it's, I think those are paths to be charted for sure. Okay, so we did pass all that. We did circle back just for some additional discussion there, um. The last uh, resolution here, um. Is for resolution, um, what should be number fifty three. And this essentially is just making a pretty standard adjustment. Um, to add myself and Ken May onto the bank accounts. We were not previously on the accounts. Um, and so this will go ahead and make sure that we are the, these, this will identify the designated signers on the account moving forward.
Move away from resolution fifty three.
Second.
Okay, second to Craig. All those in favor signify with aye. Oppose, same sign.
I'm gonna abstain just because my name's on the forum. If it was, if it just said mayor pro tem, I would have, uh, approved that.
Yep, gotcha. Thank you for abstaining. Um, and then the last item on the agenda, which I no longer, uh, we no longer have a need for, but we obviously kept on there is the closed session. Um, so that is no longer needed on the agenda and we will, uh. Take a motion to adjourn if, if, uh, there is one.
The move with John.
Second. Sue's seconds. All those in favor signify with aye. You guys are opposed? In favor, they're both in favor. Ken and Greg are in favor. Any opposed? None opposed and any abstentions?
Abstentions.
All right, thanks guys.
While we're, while we're still on publicly, I just want to thank, I think, I assume that was you Sue that posted for the um, charters on Vine. That was really nice. That's. Yeah, thank you for doing that. Um, they were more than gracious to donate their services, um. To the city for that, those trolleys, or that trolley, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Taylor was trying to give me credit for posting that and it's like, like I would know how to post on the cities.
Y'all pumped for me to learn how to do that at Iowa State University, so I'm panning back.
See you everyone. Thank you.